After. Yeah, obviously, a lot of feedback, a lot of conversation around town. And so we decided to schedule another meeting that was more like a public forum, such that people could share their opinions with us. We've also gotten many, many emails over the course of the last week. So give me just a second here. Missed anything? I need to let them know I'm there. Hello? All right, so before we get started, what this is going to look like is a chance for us to hear from you. I initially want. We gotta, can we do a mute all, please, Josh?
Andy, you're muted. I can hear that you're talking, but you're on mute.
Thanks, Patty. I asked Josh to mute everybody and then I'll try again. So I just wanted to call attention to some stuff that's happened the past. We came to a decision and there was a lot of feedback from the community, which is great. So we decided to schedule this meeting as well. Sadly, over the course of the past week, I and other school board members have been personally names and attacked in public forums. Please remember that the school is here to protect the interests of our students. And I can say for sure that if our students acted in the manner that some of us have acted over the past week, those actions would be considered bullying and they would face disciplinary action in our schools. This type of behavior can't take place tonight. Remember that your children are watching. Please be a role model for the younger citizens of Pembroke. With all out of the way, I also want to say I'd like people to express all of your thoughts and opinions. Please have your thoughts organized ahead of time and be as concise as you can. We've got now 225 people on the call, which I'm going to guess is a record for a Pembroke School Board meeting. And I'd like to get as many of those folks the opportunity to speak as possible. If I could please ask that when you speak, you also are very clear about your preferred option for returning to school or for instruction to begin again in the fall. I'll remind everybody that the board policy states that comments are limited to three minutes. That will be the rule tonight unless a board member wishes to make a motion to change. And if that's the case, then we can consider that. As the board chair, I will act as moderator to the best of my ability. Please keep your comments on topic and please keep them appropriate. I'll remind everybody that you should address the board when you're speaking. We're not going to address each other. We're not going to talk about what people said before us or attack anybody. This is for you to share information with the school board to aid us in making the best decision possible for the community. Lastly, I would just remind everybody that board policy also states that the public comment period of a meeting is comments. The board does not intend to reply to questions this evening. The goal of this meeting again is for the board and the administration to hear your concerns, your thoughts about a reentry plan for fall. And that's what we intend to do. I don't want, I don't want to devolve into arguments or, or anything like that. I want to hear what all of you have to say. So with that, as board members, is there anything that you would like to contribute before I open it up for public comment?
Andy, this is, I would like to make a motion that the time be changed to two minutes. And if Patty Sherman could be our timekeeper.
This is April. I second that motion. I just want to make sure that we give everyone who's here an opportunity to speak.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor. Is there any other discussion from the members before I go ahead and call about on that? Okay, hearing none. There's a motion to decrease the amount of time for each person to two minutes. I will take a roll call vote. Amy?
Oh.
Jean?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Anne? And I'm a yes. So, um, are there any other comments? I think Amy, you started to speak when.
Andy, I would just ask, could you just go over the motion, the actual motion that was voted and passed at the last school board meeting, please?
Um, I don't have the exact text in front of me. Do you? If you do, you can read it. Otherwise I can summarize.
Um, I don't have it in front of me either. Why don't you summarize? Or if Sandy's here and she can read it back, that would be best.
Sandy, are you able to do that? All right, so the, the motion that was made and approved at the last meeting, and this is not verbatim, is, was basically to begin the school year with only remote instruction. With the understanding that we would reevaluate our decision or at least rediscuss the, the topic at each individual school board meeting going forward. I think that about covers it. There was, I think that there were some.
Andy, I do have it here. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Let me just read the motion.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
The motion was to begin school with fully remote synchronous instruction and open up all the schools for services that require in-person meetings, especially special education services, to be reviewed every two weeks.
Thank you. So that's kind of where we're starting from right now. I guess, I think that's it. Patty, I'll give you a chance. Is there anything that you would like to add before we go ahead and open it up to the community?
No, I think I can wait at this time.
Okay, last call for board members.
Andy, this is April. And looking at the board policy, B E D H, item number three, I think it's important to bring up because of the amount of people we have here, that it does state that priorities shall be given to residents of the district to speak. So per our policy, we do ask that you state your name and also your town.
Yes, thank you. It is, it is important to state your name and your town. I think that we also, we have to keep in mind that the district in this case includes Pembroke Academy. So we do have families from other towns that, that are affected parties in this. So we need to make sure that we hear from them as well. Thank you very much, April.
I, I would just like to respect, this is April, and respectfully request that if Pembroke residents wait until all Pembroke residents have had a chance to speak. Based on our policy. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm, I'm not sure exactly how this is going to work yet with 250 people. Anyway, there is a hand raise option. So I believe, I think if we go and have people raise their hands, let me just see if I can.
Andy, this is April again, where you're doing that. I think this is a perfect opportunity just to say thank you to everyone who is here. And for me, I'm viewing this as a listening session and I'm really looking forward to hearing what our community, community input. So thank you for being here and being willing to speak with us.
Great. Josh Barubi, if you can jump in, if I get this wrong, I believe if you are on your computer, if you look, open the participants menu, so if you hover over the middle of the screen, you'll get a series of icons. The one in the middle opens your participants list. If you click on that, you'll get a bar on the right-hand side of your screen that shows all of the participants. I, it looks like on my screen at least, those are sorted in alphabetical order. Your name may be at the top. I'm not sure. If you find your own name, I believe you should have a small icon to the right of your name that looks kind of sort of like a hand. And if you click on that hand, it'll change color. I believe that will show up on my screen, I hope. Or maybe on Josh's screen. Justin says he raises his hand. Let me see if I can find him. Yeah, I don't see his hand. Josh, do you, you see the?
Yes, I do see the hand. Alicia has her hand up and I'm looking for, and James, Mr. James Hamline has his hand up as well.
Oh, bear with us a little bit. Josh, if, if it's, yes, go ahead, Patty.
Um, I just want to point out that even though the chat is open to people, it's, nobody's going to be able to monitor the chat. So if we could just use the chat for people that want to speak instead of a group discussion, that would make things much easier.
Josh, are you comfortable, since you can see the hands and you can, and you also control the muting, could you, you know, go, just going down the list from top to bottom? And with someone, with someone with a hand raised, unmute them? And if you could just state their name, then I will recognize them to speak and we can, we can go down the list that way?
Sure. If you're ready, I'll be happy to start that process.
Yeah, I think we're also.
We'll go in alphabetical order. It's Alicia. I'm going to, and she now has the floor.
Thank you so much for opening up the discussion. I'm standing here in Chuck E. Cheese where there is mostly no masks, but certainly some. If we can open Chuck E. Cheese, I certainly think we can educate our five-year-olds. This meeting was held because, because of mispolicy and not following the rules. So the agenda didn't have the facts that the public was going to vote on this. It needed to be a presence attendance to vote on this. The survey results weren't shared. Like when the moderator lied about whether or not you could apply funds to a different budget year about to be closed, to the minute that we closed the school that would have been now useful in social distancing. We know that the virus transmits less frequently with children. We also know that kids' socialization is critical. We know that the younger population has had less of this virus and it might be that we need to look at different strategies for the youth who cannot be managed at home with two, five-year-olds trying to do a synchronized model or asynchronous model with a parent trying to work at the same time than a 16-year-old who can manage themselves and get online. Also, we can look at instead funds for PPE screening protocols. Right now we have parks open, schools, parks open, camps open, restaurants open. There's 85% mobility. There is no reason we cannot actually reach our kids and we cannot just go every two weeks trying to figure out a plan. I need to know what my kids are going to do because I need to work with my employer to be able to make that work. Thank you.
Thank you. We can go down to the next one, Josh. Ready?
The next one looks to be Krista Polizia.
Great, go ahead, Krista.
Hi, I was just gonna share like a couple, I'm a nurse, so I would like to share a couple of numbers that we have ran through our practice, if that works for you guys just to hear. We see about 650 patients a day and we're out of the Bedford area and we've only had 10 patients, so 650 a day, and we've only had 10 patients with COVID within the past since March. So March, April, May, June, and July now. So it's a huge volume of people and we've only had 10. We screen them, we call them, we temperature them, and then we have to have a proof of paper if they've had COVID and then to come back into the office if they've been cleared. So that's just a huge, like, amount of patient-wise that we've only seen 10 cases, not much at all. And then another thing I would just like to share is like our lifestyle. So my husband's a firefighter and he works for a city and he's a first, he's a boner, as long as me. I'm a nurse, so I can't take any time off. He can't take any time off. And we also do have one child with a disability and we're not trained properly to be able to teach him the skills that he needs to succeed. Basically, really all I wanted to say, I'm sure a lot of people have other times, so I tried to speak as quick as I could. And just thank you for listening. And if you have any questions or concerns, you can just reach out to me if you need any statistics or anything from a nursing aspect. I will be happy to answer for anybody. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Just a quick reminder, if you're not the right. Off muted, there's some feedback and it makes it hard to hear the person that is speaking. We want to make sure that we can hear everybody. So Josh, we can move down the list?
It looks like George Wing Jr. is next.
Hey, George.
Yes, good evening, everybody. My name, like I said, is George. I'm here with my wife Shayna and the big, we're from Pembroke, yes. Biggest concern that we're finding in this entire process is we have a five-year-old with an IEP, which we understand is a circumstance is different from a lot of people. But the current model as it's set up is really not doing anything to address that IEP. It isn't really working particularly well. It didn't work particularly well at the end of last year. And, and that's not a, that's not knocking the teachers who did a fantastic job picking up at the very end and trying to make something out of nothing. Very, very pleased with all of them. Nothing but thankfulness there. But an IEP suggests that more care is needing to be made. The biggest concern that I have outside of that is just the sociological side of a five-year-old not being able to be around other kids and not being able to develop in those, those social skills that are going to be necessary when they become adults and when they become teenagers and so on and so forth. And it's not that I don't have any empathy for older kids. It's just their transition is going to be far less dramatic than some of our younger students. And I definitely would just wanted that to be noted.
You know, we understand the virus is a big thing. However, we feel a hybrid model would be able to accommodate both children with special needs and children without special needs and parents who are afraid of the virus and parents who are willing to risk the factors that go into the virus. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next one would be James Hamline. I just want to let Elizabeth Richards know that we did see that she has a question and when we get through, we'll come back to her because she came on after James had already raised his hand. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you very much. James Hamline here with my wife Allison and grandson Ethan in Allentown, New Hampshire. We're in favor of having the students go to school full-time in the classroom. I feel if there's any teachers that have a concern about their health and wellbeing, maybe we should look for a system of remote learning where we remove the teachers to a safe location and set up a remote system in the classroom so they can be there on hand professionally to assist with any issues that occur. That's just our opinion. Thank you for listening. Good night.
Thanks, James.
The next one is Jason Turgeon.
Hello?
You've got the floor.
Okay, it's actually, this is Sarah Turgeon. I live in Pembroke as well. And Jason is also with me. And we would love to see our children return to school, but also understand completely that safety and health is the priority. And we just thought something that might be helpful is to establish some sort of portal of information so that we can kind of look and see the purpose for remote and what that might look like or the purpose of hybrid and what that might look like in Pembroke, what that means, you know, for example, children will attend two days or three days or however that might be. And then what it would look like if we were back full-time. I, I'm not sure if the protocols are the same across the state. There seems to be some confusion on that in terms of things like keeping six feet, six-foot distance and wearing masks and things like that. So that's kind of where we're at. If there was some way of having information streamed so that we could keep checking what's going on within the town. And, and that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Justin Hussi, you're next.
Thank you guys for the time and I appreciate everything you guys do for the district and the school. I guess quickly I'd like to say that with the governor's orders mandating kids go back to school, that means for the parents out there that, you know, work full-time, have their kids, you know, going to school, after scare, aftercare, now they're going to have to come up with an additional cost to pay somebody to teach their kids. So there's, it's, it's not going to be fair with the governor mandating that kids need to be in school, that we're not going to fall home at this point. I, I, I think there is some need and consideration when it comes to that. And I'd be interested to see how many parents actually need to send their kids to school, you know, so I'd be interested in those numbers and I'd be interested in the results of the recent poll you sent out and I do appreciate that.
Great, thanks, Justin.
The next one would be Caitlin Moran.
Hey, guys, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
From Pembroke and our daughter is going into sixth grade and we want her to return to school. I do work in the health field. I am in a dental office every day seeing patients in their mouth. There is a lot of aerosols in dental offices and it's a safe place to be. You know, the statistics don't add up. You know, we went to, been two weeks off back when this kind of happened and I understand that that was kind of a preliminary before we knew a lot about this. But the governor himself, the CDC, the task force, everybody that we've relied on through this whole entire situation, starting from closing down for two weeks, going to continuing remote learning throughout, now the summer camps are all taking guidance from there, having children in, following the reopening guidelines. And now we're ready to make a plan and we're on the complete opposite spectrum. And it's so disappointing that, you know, it would be different if the CDC wasn't recommending it, if the governor wasn't recommending. I can understand maybe where we were keeping these, keeping a little more timid. But it's all there. All the guidance is there and it seems that this is more of a personal, maybe even political kind of stance on this. I understand there's certain guidelines that need to be matched, but the governor has already said and the task force that not only can we return to school safely, he's not even mandating masks. It's recommended, but it's not mandated. So if the governor and all these people that we followed for the last, you know, so many months, always important for you guys to have an opinion with and to follow their guidelines, now he doesn't, now it doesn't matter. Now he's not as important and now we don't even want to be stepping back to school when we've been told the kids can come back. You know, I think there needs to be some level of logic put in this and some common sense. I mean, we really have to look at the big picture for the children. I understand people are feeling they don't want to come to the model at home.
Sorry, that's, that's two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Also, another reminder, please keep yourself muted until it's time for you to speak. That was kind of getting cut off a little bit by some other, some other computers. So please keep on mute if you're not the one that is speaking. Josh, we can move down?
The next one's Kirsten Dumas.
Kirsten, go ahead.
Okay, hi. It's Cassie and Kirsten, it looks like, in Pembroke. And I think it's, I think it's easy to say everybody should just go back to school. And definitely the children are a concern, but there's a lot of logistical things I don't think the public's thought about. Number one would be the busing plan. I know in Manchester right now with a high red model, it would take them 12 hours to bus all the children in. That's having an A and a B group, two days in two days. I'm worrying, you know, I'm worried about safety protocols in a dentist office. You don't have 24 students in a classroom. You don't have those tight aisles. Even in the day camps, they are calling for a certain amount and they are following protocols. In a school, it is very hard. We're talking about social distancing. We're talking about proper ventilation. Most classrooms have a teeny tiny window. Deep cleaning procedures in between. I'm wondering if the school board or the school has gotten any ADA plans, which is the Americans with Disability Acts. Any teachers that are at high risk should be turning in their ADA plans. And then the school district has to work around that. And also a plan for the, for a future surge. So let's just say that we, we all go back to school and there's masks, there's no masks, and teachers start to get sick. We have a hard time now getting subs. How are we going to man a child's education when all your teachers are getting sick and they're off? I know that I have three family members that have been tested. It's been 15 days and there are no results yet. So those are just my concerns. I think the board is doing a fantastic job and I'm ashamed of our town for treating you the way they are. But there are logistical issues we have to think about too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Raymond is next.
Good evening. Thank you. So my name is Chris Raymond. I'm both a PA parent and I'm an Allentown School Board member. So I am in Allentown. I ask that the Pembroke School Board strongly reconsider the decision to start school fully remote and go to a hybrid. New Hampshire has 407 active cases of COVID-19, which is the lowest number of active cases since April 4th. In our SAU towns, Deerfield, Pembroke, and Tychester have zero active cases. Allentown and Epsom now show that one through four status of current active cases. The New Hampshire DOE School Board reopening guidance documents gave a link to the American Academy of Pediatrics that said the AAP strongly advocates that all policy considerations for the coming school year should start with the goal of having students physically present in the school. Finally, I want to bring up the AREA agreement to say that I feel Allentown, Tychester, and Epsom should all have a say in Pembroke Academy's school start. The agreement is woefully inadequate for 2020 since it's an inflexible document initiated in 1969 where there was no such thing as remote instruction. However, the AREA does say a joint meeting for participating school boards should happen for the purpose of consulting and advising about any and all matters of joint interest, including changes in curriculum and other school programs and services. This full remote start for Pembroke Academy is a full change from how the other SAU 53 schools have chosen to start. So I feel our town should have a voice with Pembroke Academy's starting hybrid as well. These are not easy times and we're not going to please everyone, but we should do what is right for the greatest good for our students' educational journey. And that good is having kids in school and not remote. So thank you so much for your time and I do recognize these are not easy times for a school board.
Thank you, Chris.
Christine Gamlin is up next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, is this Christine?
Yes, it is. Sorry. I didn't know if I was off mute or not.
Yep, you're good.
So I have a, going to be a junior this year.
I think we lost you. Kristen, are you still with us?
We can try to come back to Christine.
Yep, sorry, Christine, if you can hear us, we can't hear you. I can see that you're not on mute. So I'm not sure what's up, but we will try to circle back.
Kay Doyle will be next.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much to the board for putting this together so quickly and listening to our concerns. I am a Pembroke parent. I have children at Hill and at TRS and I am a teacher at Pembroke Academy. We have 800 students at Pembroke Academy. We have 800 students at Pembroke Academy. And I have a really hard time understanding how we can go back the way that we are situated right now. Someone had mentioned busing already. Busing is going to be an issue for the other schools, but it is not something that we need to have to logistically concern ourselves with at PA. But you know, we're talking about amusement parks. They're at 25% capacity. Movie theaters are supposed to be at 50, and they're not even opening because they have to be at 50%. There has been a lot of talk about cases and how many cases that we've had, how many cases there are right now that are active. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that we've had kids at home, that they have not been out and about, and if they're at a rec program or something, they are severely limited in the size of the kids that are there. I was reading a really interesting, I'll wrap this up here. I know a lot of people need to speak. I read an interesting op-ed on the Washington Post earlier this week, and it was a teacher who said, "I've always been prepared to put myself between my students and a bullet. I'm absolutely unwilling to be the gun." We have to worry about our staff being people that could spread to our students, to our children. And this is a public health crisis, that we really need to keep that in mind. That's not just an economic issue. It's a public health issue as well. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kristen.
Yeah, next up is Matt Petersons.
Oh, oh, my goodness.
Go ahead, Matt.
All right, I was writing my comment. I had no idea I'd be going. Okay. Matt Petersons from Pembroke, New Hampshire. Either way, if we have a plan to go fully remote or through the hybrid model eventually, it's critical that the Pembroke School District come up with clear goals and transparency to know that learning is happening. What I'm expecting, and what many of likely the other residents of Pembroke are expecting, is that it looked nothing like what had happened in the spring. I think much of our frustration about what has occurred in, for this decision, is based on our perspective about what happened in the spring. And that was not, that was not learning. Instead, it was, I'm not really, it was the best attempt at what we had at the time. Now we have a plan. Now we can develop a plan. And I'd like to see that, like, there be clear goals and guidelines for the progress of learning for both of my children in the Pembroke schools that they go to. To have synchronous classrooms where it's happening with a teacher, the teacher's able to see them. They are able to see the teacher in real live time. I know it is possible. I, I've seen it happen. Our sister schools in Allenstown were able to do it. Pembroke can certainly do it. And the other thing is, that I'd like to see is more accountability to getting grades in, making sure that students are being held accountable for the work that they're doing, and that it's not just a blow-off time for both the students in their learning. These are critical times that these students are going through, and I'd like to see the best attempt possible. So thank you all for bringing us together. Accountability is going to be key in whatever we choose to do. Thanks.
Thanks, Matt.
Next is Melinda Frame.
Go ahead, Melinda.
Am I unmuted? First, I want to say thank you to the Pembroke Hill teachers. That's where my experience is. I feel with the situation this past fall, they did, or sorry, spring, they did an amazing job meeting the needs of my children, willing to have phone calls with them to help them through when they were having learning difficulties. I also would like to thank the board for trying to get information ahead and do things every two weeks to make sure that when we go back, we're not yo-yoing. Because I don't think that that's going to be helpful for our students to go back and then have an issue and have to be back home. I am concerned about when we go back. What does that look like developmentally? I know in the district diamond, we're going to have five-year-olds wearing masks all day. That is going to be difficult. So while I personally believe being in person and having that socialization is paramount for all of our kiddos, I think we have to consider what is that going to look like? And is it going to be more detrimental to be back in places where we look like we belong? In a surgery room instead of a school? And I thank you for giving us this outlet. I thank you for being strong as people are attacking you. I don't envy your position. But again, I want our safety considerations, along with the developmental things to be considered for our kids. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Next is Mike. He had his hand up, and he put it down. He put it back up. I just want to double check that if Mike wants to speak, that he can go, I do so.
Yeah, I did. I couldn't, I had no indication whether it was on or off, so I kind of hit it a few times. Sorry. Mike Dodd, I have a student, I'm from Epsom, but I have a student at PA. I know everybody's experience has been different. I think the high school was well-equipped to handle remote, whereas it sounds like maybe your lower schools were not. But I feel like, I have two students at PA, actually. One of them has an IEP, which was a challenge, because I'm not equipped to do that. I would like some more information, maybe publicized. I know you guys said something about IEP students being able to go back to the school. I don't know what that looks like. I don't really know what that is all about. But that would help us, you know, understand maybe a little more, because the IEP was definitely a challenge. My other son, he's going into his junior year this year. They were a challenge, but I feel like the school board should maybe look at options for different schooling. High schoolers should be able to wear masks all day, just like we do when we go to work or go out in public. We don't have the busing problem, so there's not a lot of close contact. And if we're not, you know, we can't social distance, we can all wear masks. I understand maybe the younger schools may not be able to do that, but the older kids definitely could, which I think would make maybe life a little easier on some levels for some people. I don't know, just some options maybe for the school board to look at. I appreciate you guys' time, and thank you for all you guys do.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, next up is Nick Pope.
Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you very much. I'm here with my wife Erin, and just definitely wanted to thank the school board for everything you guys have done so far, handling everything in the spring. And it's just really a shame what I've seen a lot of this town go to since this announcement was made on some of our public forums. First and foremost, we are in support of remote learning to start the year. But very quickly, we'd like to see that turn into a hybrid model, because I, I definitely understand that we're lucky enough to be able to do remote. And there are a lot of people with their jobs and the lifestyle that they live and just how they work, but that's not an option for them. But I think to those people, we really need to look outside of our school board and our school system about why that's a problem for us as a community and as a country. You know, at this point in time, again, I, I just really think the ultimate goal here is for the safety of all kids. And we really need to think about that, and what does this comeback looking like? I would like to see the detailed plans about what each of these look like, because I agree wholeheartedly that it'll be tough if it's like what it was in the summer. So I know my job is now fully remote. I was in an office, and we have no plans of going back anytime soon. And for a large company to do that, it speaks volumes. So I don't really want my kids to be a guinea pig at this point in time. I'm afraid of anything. I understand the concept, but I also understand that we don't need to rush this. And if we're reevaluating in two weeks, I think we need to get it right and get it done the first time and not have to step back and, like others have said, have a yo-yo effect. Thank you very much for putting this on. Thank you so much for the support from all of the community, and I'm really impressed with the amount of people that have joined in tonight.
Thank you.
So I just want to say it's not lost. Some people athletically have joined. I have written your names down. We will get back to you if we pass that part of the section. So be assured your voice will be heard. But next up is Roger Monte.
Hello, can you hear me? Tonight with my husband Roger Monte. I am Nicole Karakaya Monte, the mother of children who participate in Pembroke classes. We are Pembroke community. And I want to say that the way the remote learning went at the end of the year, it was kind of a hard-pressed thing. We had to do it. We knew that. But two of my three kids do very well. We have one needs a little extra stuff and just didn't seek, didn't needed to get through that. And I feel we're a divided community, where half the people are for remote learning and half are for bringing the kids back in full-time. And I think that if they want to do the remote learning, they're going to make a point and an effort to be on in time in the morning where they need to be. And the kids who need to go to class can do that as well and split, split the situation. Let it be the parents call if they choose their kids not to be in that situation. Yes, I feel they should wear masks. Yes, I feel they should be doing social distancing. Where both essential employees who are full-time all week long since this all began, and it is too much for these three kids to get through on their own at home by theirself, unsupervised. It's undoable. And I feel that me being an HR employee for the state of New Hampshire, for New Hampshire employees, I definitely get the guidelines. I get the difficulties. But I feel that if we look at it as a whole and give people the opportunity to do what they choose to do, it may help solve the problem in an easier way. I just don't see the kids getting what they need when they're at home, when the parents can't be there to help. And I'm sorry, but three teenage girls do not always get along home unsupervised all alone. So you're forcing them, as someone else said, to pay for someone to be there, to be part of that during the day when the parents can't be. And I feel that if the kids want to go back, go back.
Sorry, that's two minutes.
Thank you very much. Just a quick reminder to please make sure you're muted if you're not the one speaking. There's an awful lot of feedback happening right now. I'm scrolling through the list, and I can see eight or 10 people that are not muted. If you hover your mouse over the middle of the screen, you should see a mute icon all the way on the left if it's, you are not muted. If it's orange, you are muted. Please double-check that so that we can hear the people that are speaking. Josh, we're ready for the next one.
The next one on the list is Rose Marie Balboni.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can now. Thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Rose Marie Balboni, Melissa Drive, and Pembroke. I have a senior at PA and an eighth grader at TRS. I trust that you received and reviewed my letter. I stand on my letter. I request each of you state the facts and data that you have relied upon to make your decision. Parents need to understand your decision. 276 people in this meeting. It's because people don't understand. People don't understand what was presented. People don't understand how you voted. From what I found online, I don't see a plan that has a lot of details to it. It's a two-page, two-and-a-half-page document. I don't think that answers everyone's questions. 278 people now in this meeting. The information that the board and the school has made available to the parents is light. If you were to flush it out, support your decisions, I think the parents would have a degree of comfort with what you decide, whatever you decide. My personal preference is that we cannot do remote learning. I would like the option to keep my kids out of school entirely and skip school this year if remote learning is going to be how the Pembroke School District is going to go, and I'd like them to start up again next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Scott Borja, I believe.
Go ahead, Scott.
Hi, this is Allison Borja. I'm here with my husband Scott. Are you getting a lot of static?
Yeah, if you happen to have two devices on, if you're on the phone and on the computer, if you can mute one of them, that would be helpful.
That, I did review the last school board meeting minutes that were posted on YouTube. On, I think your last meeting was the beginning of June. And it wasn't even discussed any plans at that time. And then you guys had set a meeting in, I believe, 7/7 to start discussing the plans of opening the schools, which other schools had already been discussing for months. So I feel that the remote learning was a knee-jerk reaction because there was a lack of planning. And there was lack of any type of presentations on school websites, the parent survey. I think that there needs to be better planning, and if you decide to do remote, then you guys need to come up with a plan and start now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Josh, can you just scroll through quickly and give me like a rough idea of, well, I don't think we're close to our hour yet. There was some talk at 6:30 and stuff. We've still got some time. I'm just curious as to roughly how many hands are raised.
Then why don't you shut this off then?
Well, whatever.
I have close to 20 that I can see right now.
Great. If you wouldn't mind doing a mute all again, and then we can take the next one on the list.
The next one, the next one on the list I have is, looks like Ms. Rivard. I'm not down to the S's yet, but it's Ms. Rivard. Just give me one second here.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, good to go.
Thank you. So my name is Shannon, and I do live in Pembroke. I have two children that go to Pembroke Hill School. So thanks for taking the time to get this meeting together. I think we all appreciate it. I'm here to ask that the school board rethinks their plan for the fall. I feel like at this time, we should be looking into either hybrid or honestly, just going back full-time. I understand that you all, we all have different opinions, different worries, but we should be able to make the decision for our own family. If there are teachers, staff members, parents, students that are nervous or don't feel like it's safe enough for them, that's fine, but they should have that option to stay home themselves. Why can't those teachers teach the remote classes? If a parent or a staff member is confident enough to send their child back to school or back to work, then we should be allowed to do so. There's not enough medical data that's supporting our school's need to be closed. The virus numbers are being walked back by multiple labs in multiple states, and there haven't been any proven studies that show that our kids can be asymptomatic carriers. I respect the teachers, and I feel for you. Everyone's being, you know, feeling nervous. However, other people didn't sign up for this either. My husband's a truck driver. He never signed up for that. It's just, it's something that we all have to do. We all are dealing with. And I just feel like we should be given the choice. There's not enough proven things to show that we need to be completely closed. And honestly, my family, it just did not work for us. My children did not learn. The teachers gave it their best effort. But even comparing to other towns, Hooksett Schools were having homework sent out the day that the quarantine started. For three weeks, I worked off of a bingo sheet. And again, I know they didn't have much to work with, but a bingo sheet for three weeks, it just wasn't sufficient enough. And to do it all at once, it's just, I can't imagine what you're going to do.
That's two minutes. Sorry.
Thanks, Shannon.
Shannon Harris is next.
Hi, thank you so much for taking my call. I really appreciate your time. I also really appreciate the time of all the school board members who didn't realize that they were getting themselves into a combat position when they decided to be part of this. I am a mother, single mother of a senior at Pembroke Academy. And to say, I can just about say just everything that Shannon just said, almost ditto. There has to be a way of considering options for our school and for our students that isn't just black and white. It's not either or. Is it possible to get a little bit more flexible? James earlier tonight gave us a flexible idea of having parents or, you know, children at school and teachers remote. I don't know how that would work, but dang, it was a creative idea. What about an option of having part of the school open for full-time students? Part of the school open for hybrid with the teachers that are feeling more comfortable with the full-time students, the teachers that are feeling less possibly with the hybrid model. Those parents that are feeling uncomfortable sending their child to school at all, as we heard, they can consider a remote with possibly that synchronized classroom that we were talking about. they can consider a remote with possibly that synchronized classroom that we were talking about. We are creative people. I know that we can come up with a solution that will fit. It doesn't have to be black and white, one thing over another. I know that my son didn't do well with remote learning. Neither did my daughter from SNHU. Remote learning is difficult if you work best in person. So I'm really hoping that we can come up with something that may be a little bit more flexible, a little creative, that can make the biggest impact for our students. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Sharon.
Next is Steve and Timmy Boucher.
Go ahead.
Lengthy letter to you, so I'll be brief. It is Stephen Timmy Boucher from Pembroke. And Andy, I know you said there would be no comment. I do think it would be helpful for people to know if there were a decision to change your minds on your other decision, what that would entail, like what process-wise that would entail. And also for people to know whether or not you plan to do, take any type of vote tonight, because I know people have before. We'll stay right up front that we want to go back to school in person, full-time with safety precautions. Remote learning did not work for us. It was not nearly the caliber of in-person instruction, not even in the ballpark. We appreciate the effort went into, that went into it, but it was not something that was productive for our student. And even if we were to believe it would change in the fall, which we really don't, in the classroom is where students belong. It's where everyone has said, the experts say they belong. Even people who say they don't want to go back say that's where students belong. Of course, you can't guarantee safety. We can't guarantee no one will get COVID. But conversely, we can't guarantee that no one will get the flu and die. We can't guarantee that there won't be someone who enters the school with a weapon. There's just no way to make any guarantees. There won't be today, there won't be tomorrow. So we have to do what we've always done, which is put in place the best precautions possible to keep our students safe and get them back to school. And I do think that you have to listen to all voices. I realize it was not a large audience at the last one, but you put out a survey and if we're to believe the statistics, sixty-seven percent averaged out over the schools want to go back in some fashion. And I think a plan, we think a plan, where you go back to school and there's always the option for remote for staff or teachers or students or whomever doesn't feel comfortable, gives everyone a choice. By going one-hundred percent remote, you took two-thirds of the people who took the time to answer your survey and said their opinion didn't matter because they were looking back and they now do not have a choice at all.
Sorry, Tammy, that's two minutes. Sorry.
Right. Thank you very much.
Tim Girardi, you're on, you're next.
Hi, everyone. Tim Girardi, Pembroke. I totally support going back to school full-time. Listening to everybody on here. Look, the facts, they just don't support remote, period. Remote doesn't work. Didn't work last year and I'm hard-pressed that over the past few months that we would drastically change that. When the governor gave his recommendation, I think we looked at that as the state's completely bifurcated from the far south to where we are. There are no cases. We need to get our children back to school, back in a social environment. And we need to get them learning in an appropriate manner. I understand the other side of the aisle. But to the previous point, we cannot simply just protect from every single situation. We have to have plans in place. We have to be able to live and get our students and our children back to where they belong, and that's in school, in a normal year and in a normal fashion. Parents are not set up to understand and learn and teach our students. So that's my view. We need to get these kids back to school as normal and monitor the situation. And if things change, we can pivot. But I see no reason, given that we're in a place where there are zero cases and things have been very stable, why we cannot go back to school. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
The next one looks to be Amy. It was just.
Hi, I know, just my first name, sorry. My name's Amy Owen and I'm from Pembroke. I have two kids that are in the school system in PA. They're going to be sophomores. They're fifteen-year-old boy-girl twins. My daughter did great with remote learning. She had no problem. But my son, he has an IEP and he gets special services through his case management. He needs to be back in school. There's just not much else that I can say other than he needs his case manager. I've seen regression. I don't know if there's other parents out there with kids with special needs that have also seen regression. I've worked my butt off for fifteen years to get him where he was at and to get him to a place where he had a path. His path's gone. And I need him to be back in school with his case manager, who pushes him to be his best. And that's what I need. I understand, you know, hybrid full-time. You know, hybrid would be great for my daughter, but my son needs to be back at school and that's just the way it is. And I hope that the board can really put a plan in place for special needs students because I haven't heard one plan for special needs kids, and my kid is not the only one that doesn't have a plan. There are other parents out there who their kids don't have a plan. There was no plan came March and I think he got lost. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
The next person is Ashley Sangadose. I apologize if I pronounced your last name incorrectly.
Can you hear me? Perfect. Hi, my name's Ashley. It's Ashley Sangadolce. And I actually have a child with autism who goes to Pembroke Hill. My concern is basically for the children who have special needs and disabilities, how that's going to play a role when they are in the school, if they do get to go in the school, knowing that they have to be six feet apart. I myself am a paraprofessional and I can't imagine how difficult that's going to have to be to be six feet apart from my students and offer some sort of assistance with their paper that I might not even be able to see. The other thing is these children that do have IEPs or autism or ADHD require breaks. I know that they have the opportunity to walk around. I haven't seen any plans in place on how that might look in the classroom with having to be six feet apart or what a meltdown might look like. I know some of these students might require hands-on as well. And how are teachers supposed to do that or prevent the child from accidentally hurting themselves or others in the classroom when you can't put your hands on them? I'm sorry, I'm trying to go as quickly as I can. My other concern is when it, what happens if a teacher or a child or a paraprofessional, the sub, the nurse, gets COVID, if they get COVID, or they get told that they have to get tested for COVID and then they have to quarantine themselves for two weeks? Does the entire classroom have to then go home for two weeks? I feel like there needs to be options for both parents because I see both sides of the situation. But I don't see myself sending my son into school knowing with his autism that he can have a meltdown. He's been out of school since March. That's going to be a completely different turn of events, transition, going back into school. And I just, I'm lost. I feel like there definitely needs to be options for doing both remote learning as well as in-school learning. Because not everybody is a, everybody learns differently, is what I'm trying to say. My son thrived with remote learning. I didn't see any meltdowns. I didn't see any fear, anxiety. He did great. He did his work. He loved his work. He does wear a mask. He actually enjoys his mask. I have to tell him to take it off when we're at home. But not every.
Sorry, that's two minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley.
The next person up is Becky. It just says Becky.
Hi, thank you. My name's Becky. I'm from Pembroke. I have three children in the Pembroke Schools and totally understand that the number one priority is the safety of both students and staff. And appreciate that maybe that's why remote learning was chosen. I did not attend the last meeting, so I'm not sure of any specifics of any kind of plans that were laid out by the administration. I am an educator myself, so I do understand the intricacies that are involved in this. My family supports going back in a hybrid model with something like fifty percent capacity. We feel like this is a way to help to mitigate or help to ensure some level of safety for students, staff and families. The CDC guidance I know was quoted earlier. It is still six feet for social distancing. So whatever, you know, you can hold for capacity in the school buildings with that six-foot distancing and the wearing of masks when that distancing can't be maintained, I feel is sort of a meat in the middle. You know, where we are getting that social interaction piece that children do need at all of the ages K through twelve. But we're also getting that, that safety piece in there as well. They get some FaceTime with their teachers and other students. And they also get the safety factor of not being exposed to as many. I think cohorting is another thing to look at very strongly and not moving students around, but moving staff to a limited degree so that you're also not putting your staff in as much danger either. I understand the challenges of meeting these guidelines in an educational setting. And I think we need to remember that the situation that put us here is that this is a pandemic. And that's, that's kind of bottom line here and things just can't go back to the way they were. And we think that that's important for everyone to remember as well. So we are one-hundred percent on board with some type of a hybrid model that maintains as much safety as possible.
Becky, could I, before you go, could I just get your last name for the note for the minutes, please?
Yes, Wing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is listed as Bova, B-O-V-A.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. So I just want to let you know all, I'm a first-time listener, longtime caller. But I just break up the little monotony there. I have no sides right now. Things are never going to be the same.
Can I, just before we get started, sorry to interrupt. Can I get your first and last name and your town, please?
Sure, it's Chris Bova in Pembroke.
Thank you very much.
I have two kids that are great and another one. So basically, I'm just talking about what everyone has to kind of understand. The remote learning wasn't planned, so I didn't expect anybody to see really how it was going to be successful when it just came out of nowhere. Things are changing all the time. We hear the word fluid. We're never going to be able to satisfy everyone and we have to understand that. One thing I think is that social media plays a huge play in this. It changes all discussions because everyone can speak without being seen or heard. And it causes a lot of frustration as well as anger between people. I think we just need to understand that a contingency plan has to be made. No one ever planned on a contingency for this type of situation. No one thought of a pandemic. Having a little time ahead of time might help with remote learning. It also might help with how getting kids back to school. I pity all the decisions you have to make. It's a difficult process to do and listening to everyone and being the center of all this. I just think that it's a work in progress. Everyone has to understand what's going on. And if we can all be patient with each other, I think we're going to be able to work through this while we still can be friends and friendly. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristy Rice. The floor is yours. Kristy?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much for your time. For the public record, Kristy Rice. We live in Pembroke. We are taxpayers. We have a daughter in TRS. I attended the last school board meeting, so I was there when the hybrid plan was rolled out. And after listening to school board members and public comment, it was decided, given all of the questions and all the parameters that needed to be put in place for the safety of students and faculty, that remote learning was rolled out. And just so parents know, that remote planning was going to be different than the crisis that was in the spring. And yes, to be looked at every two weeks. However, although there was a vote cast, I realize there's a lot of going back and forth. And while I can see both sides, unfortunately, going back to school masked for my daughter presents health issues with asthma. Outdoor classes presented for a hybrid model presents other issues for connective tissue disorder, which now puts my daughter in special education. Flipping back and forth doesn't work. A hundred percent remote doesn't work. And I realize that's the same for all families. And controlling variables outside the home in addition to the classroom and how parents feel is difficult as well. So I'm just trying to, I'm just sharing because at that meeting, other parents had actually considered enrolling their children outside the district. So we actually made that decision this past weekend. We enrolled her outside the district into private education just because this doesn't seem to be getting better and there's no plan in place. And it would be helpful to know from school board meeting to school board meeting that there is something moving forward. We know what to do. There's so much uncertainty that one thing we need to provide is a level of certainty for our kids and a path forward that gets us into the classroom. A benefit for us and what we looked for was full day, no masks. Cohorts were really important. Teacher-student ratio of no more than eight to ten, to one at a time. They use their own bathrooms. They travel together. So there's a lot of things I think the school board could take into consideration for either way.
Sorry, that's two minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just let you know, I have about, it looks like ten people still on the list and Colleen is up next.
Okay, I think we're around about an hour, but I wanted to hear from as many people as we can, so let's keep moving along.
Colleen, you're good to go.
Hey, my son has a five oh four and he's in Hill School right now. I was curious if it was even possible to socially distance children considering the merge of schools with the other school that he was from. I'm, I understand where a lot of parents are coming from, wanting to send this kid back to school. And socially, my son has been incredibly isolated. He's a single child. And it has not been great for his mental health. Ultimately, I propose like a hybrid option. I'm from Pembroke. I appreciate the time to speak. Thank you.
Colleen, I didn't catch your last name.
Benton, B-E-N-T-H-I-L-L.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Debbie McRis is next.
Thank you. I did send an email into the board and I want to thank you for your time in scheduling this meeting. I know this is not an easy situation. From my own personal experience, one, I had two in the school, one just graduated. And the, the impact on their anxiety and depression was of being remote was much larger than I ever thought it could be. I know pediatricians in the American Academy of Pediatrics is saying that it's very important to get kids back into school as safely as possible. If a hybrid model has to be done, that's fine. But because they're seeing such massive increases in anxiety and depression in teens. I mean, my daughter's going into a junior year and like she would be so stressed out about the online learning that she, you know, she never had this type of anxiety. So I am concerned on how this is impacting all these kids with the isolations and the remote learning, that they're not having the socialization and they're not having the opportunity to have one-on-ones with the teachers. When, you know, my daughter would often use the free period to talk to her teachers and if she was struggling with the subject, she would have conversations with them and be able to have that one-on-one in person where the teacher could actually show and explain whatever she was having difficulties with. And it, you know, that made a big difference in the learning. Whereas with the remote, it's not happening that way. I know it should be different than it was in the spring, but there's still a disconnect with them not being in the presence of the teacher and having that opportunity to have that back and forth that they have during the school year. So, you know, I appreciate all your time. I think my vote would be, I certainly would like a full-time model if it's possible. I understand that may not, but I think a hybrid should be feasible in some way. And, you know, we see all these other larger school districts around us going back in hybrid models. And it seems like we should be able to have some sort of similar situation to give these kids the opportunity to have that in-person learning they so desperately need. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
Debbie, Deb Bray is next.
Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Excellent. Great. So my name is Deb Bray. I live in Pembroke and I have a son that's entering first grade at Hill in the fall. So I want to start by saying that remote learning this past March was torturous. My son struggled with it. My husband and I struggled with it. There's not enough alcohol in the world to make me want to repeat that time. However, I work in emergency service. However, I work in emergency services and I disagree with the commenters here saying that it's safe to return full time to school. I don't agree that you can compare Chuck E. Cheese opening or dental office opening to having hundreds of kids together for hours on end in school. I'm not going to debate statistics as people will believe what they want and will look for facts to support those beliefs, no matter what anybody says. I do believe that going remote initially is a good idea as long as that, as long as we're going to take that additional time to develop a real plan for returning to the classroom. I think we have a month before the school season starts. And at this point, I'm losing faith that we're going to have a plan in place at the rate we're going because of the infighting that's happening. That said, I believe it should be, my belief is that we should have a hybrid model for returning to school after that two week remote learning. That's it. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Deb.
Elizabeth Richards is up next.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm really dismayed at what feels like to me, a lack of clear direction and leadership from, at the SAU level. It's July 28th. We haven't heard anything from the SAU since March. And our individual principals and assistant principals have been gathering and creating plans. But where is the leadership from our superintendent? I'm just, I feel like we should have been hearing over the summer about how things were being thought about, whether or not how teachers are being trained, how classes were being set up. We knew this was coming. So it's a month out and now it feels like panic time. And I feel like some of this could have been avoided. I also work in education. I work in higher education. Since the day we were sent home in March, we've been prepping and planning for fall semester. So I'm just confused at an administrative level why that hasn't happened. My family supports a hybrid model. To us, it feels like that is the best way to keep everybody safe and give kids some of the social interaction and face to face time with teachers that will be the most helpful. I think everyone is eager to return to normal. I am too. I would love to put my kids on the school bus in the morning and have them go to school and go back to my office. That sounds wonderful. But that's not how pandemics work. And just because we want it to be so doesn't mean it will be so. And keeping kids safe and teachers safe should be our highest priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is up is Emily Spensky.
Hi, thank you for allowing us this opportunity. I am a nurse at Concord Hospital and I can speak to the numbers that our community has posted. As of yesterday, we've tested over 10,000 people at the hospital alone. And out of those, only about 162 people have come back positive, of which we have zero cases currently at the hospital as patients, which is great for our community. And I think it proves that we've done a great job in this community. You know, with hand washing and mask wearing, et cetera. On that note, I truly believe that our kids need to get back into the school in some fashion or another. Remote learning did not go well for us here. I have a first grader at home who did not do, not do well. His anxieties through the roof. And he has definitely been struggling at home. But I would say that for those that are concerned about, you know, children wearing masks throughout the day. I know personally, my child would struggle with that. But I do feel that if the teachers were to wear the mask and students were at their desks, maybe it's not quite as important for them to wear their masks. I wear a mask all day at work for 14 hours. However, my patients do not, and I'm typically within six inches of their face while I'm doing my assessments. And nobody at the hospital has gotten COVID from patient care. So I think if teachers were able to wear masks in the classroom with students, they would be protected and continue doing hand washing and sanitizing, et cetera. And I just wanted to let everybody know that I'm for school, going to school somewhere or another. And I, I don't envy the decision that is on you guys, but we'll make do. And we'll pull together as a community. I know we can do that to do it for our kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Jean Goss, you're up next.
I'm on the list. I'm listening. Sorry.
No problem. So Julie McFarland, you are now on the floor.
Alright, so my name's Julie McFarland. I'm from Pembroke. I'm thankful for you guys for doing all the work you're doing. And I know it's not an easy decision. I'm for a full time school only for the fact that me and my husband are both full time employees. So either way, we would have to find childcare elsewhere for them to work on schooling. And that would expose them anyways. I know there's precautions, just like the one before me said, that the teachers can wear masks. I don't know if you guys can make an option that if certain teachers are willing to stay home and do the remote, that the people that have health issues or that want to be remote have that option. And those who want to go to school can do the full time with teachers that are willing. I just think that the hybrid won't work because you have like two, a group of students going with one teacher and then that same teacher is with another group of students. So it's the same exposure. So I would just, I want a decision whether it's full time or if it's full time remote. Because the going back and forth, it's hard for working parents. So I just think there needs to be a decision made so we can plan. And I'm hoping we go back to school with the option for those who want to be on remote. I thank you guys for your time and that's all.
Thank you.
Melanie Camello, you're next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Melanie Camello from Pembroke. First, I just want to thank the school board members for everything that you're doing. I was at the last school board meeting. I'm sorry that you guys have had a rough week. I think there was a lot of unanswered questions and I think you guys did the best you could. Now saying that, the DOE guidance that came out on page 29 and 30 stated that accommodations were going to be, need to be made for those that fall into the safer at home category. It stated VLAX and homeschool should be if no other viable options exist. My question is what other viable options were considered? VLAX is an online charter school in which for this year only means the district can keep the funding for those students, but has no responsibility to teach those children. That shouldn't be okay with anybody here tonight. I think we need to remember that we have staff and students in Pembroke who are immune compromised. Nobody has been through a pandemic before. There's no right answer. As far as I know, nobody here tonight is an epidemiologist. Parents should have a choice based on their comfort level. We have a duty to provide an education to every student in Pembroke. Therefore, I would like to ask the school board members to consider making and approving a motion tonight to open Pembroke schools to the maximum extent possible while offering a choice of a district provided remote learning option for staff and students that require one. Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie.
I want Lisa P. to chime in to see if she'd like to speak. She had her hand up for a long time and just took it down. So I'd like to give her the opportunity because she is next on the list.
Josh, can you say the name one more time? You cut out a little bit. I just want to make sure whoever it is can hear you.
Lisa P., if you still wish to speak, if you're next, but your hand did go down. So I'm not sure if you're still willing. I thought it was just going to take too long. You're up next if you're, if you're ready.
Come once.
Hear me? Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
So I live in Pembroke. We live on Navy and Drive. I have a son that's going to PA and a daughter that's going to be at TRS. And I'm a teacher, not from Pembroke. And my husband is a principal in Ballant. And I was reading the chat and I was listening that a lot of people were talking about the planning and they kept mentioning the spring and how it was not good. But what I think a lot of people don't understand is that we were basically, teachers were thrown into this. Please, they basically told us you have two days to completely redo your job. So if we do go in with a plan and a plan that's done early enough, remote learning will be completely different in the fall because teachers will have time to plan for it. I see people mentioning precautions, you know, Clorox wipes. I can't even buy more than two at Target. So I'm sure the teachers are thinking, how am I going to be able to wipe down desks when we can't even get the supplies that we need? Another thing that I know was mentioned that was that teachers need to be out in the hallway, making sure that students are social distancing. But how can they be wiping down desks and be out in the hallway all at the same time? So I'm, we support remote learning. I never thought that my children would do well with remote learning. And I wouldn't say they flourished. They didn't. But I do think that they did as well as they could based on what they were given. So that's all I have to say. I hope you heard me the whole time. Thank you.
Thanks.
Nicole Ficken, Nicole Ficken, you are next.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, so I am a Pembroke resident. I am a Pembroke teacher. I work at Pembroke Academy. And I have a seven year old going into second grade at Pembroke Hill in the fall. I support remote learning right now and then maybe moving to a hybrid model after we have met CDC guidelines, state guidelines and NEA guidelines. I just wanted to point out that I had to make the tough decision this year to hire somebody so that I could still be a teacher. So I know that we all have to make sacrifices right now and I'm with you. It's really hard. It was either that or I had to quit teaching and I didn't want to do that. I also wanted to make a point that remote learning is totally different from what we were doing in the spring. What we were doing in the spring was crisis learning. We were doing what we could with what we had. It was very hard for all of us. But I think giving teachers the opportunity to plan, give us a structure, give us some guidelines, say this is how we're going to do it this year. We can make it work for your kids. I can promise you that. And also, I just wanted to ask if we do go back full time or if we do go back as a hybrid, is there any possibility that they are looking into the HVAC at all of the schools to make sure that it's up? And, you know, it's safe and it's, you know, prepared for our kids so that we have that, you know, that airflow that we need. Because quite frankly, at this point, all I can think about is I'm going to have my windows open in the middle of winter because I just don't feel comfortable being in that room without that. So I just wanted to put a couple of things out there. And again, thank you to the school board for everything that we do.
Thanks, Nicole.
Karen Rusing, you're next.
I'm here, I think.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. I just wanted to say thank you again to all the school board members and teachers for all of their hard work and for giving me an opportunity to speak today. I wanted to remind everybody that we had a school board meeting on March 14th and the gym was packed. And then on March 16th, the plug was pulled and boom, we had to do remote learning. And the teachers in our district immediately got it set up within a week. I know it did not work for everyone. But now that we have, if there is a plan in place with better training, the remote learning can, could extend beyond just a week's notice of going remote. So they need more training. And by the way, we need more money for ventilation. We need more money for teachers to get training. And remember, two years ago, when the taxes went up and the PA gym was packed wall to wall with people because the taxes went up. I need to know where all this money is going to come from to retrain these teachers to get the proper ventilation. And these shields that people are talking about on buses, where's that money going to come from? I understand PA doesn't have buses. I get it. I get it. But you have to remember that K through eight in Pembroke is a lot larger. Somebody's not on mute. K through eight in Pembroke is a lot larger than it is in Allentown, Epsom and Chichester. This is not a cookie cutter type of a situation. So I just wanted to know where, I don't want to have another town meeting in March and have everybody angry because everybody wanted to go hybrid because we needed more money for ventilation. We needed more money for this. We needed more money for that. And I just, I just don't want you guys to be angry that the money's going up. I'm sorry, Ms. Sherman.
Sorry.
One more quick thing that my, my daughter is a sophomore, going to be a sophomore. And I have a senior who just graduated but going to LIFT. And if nobody knows what LIFT is, it's also at Pembroke Academy. And her IEP and her case manager did amazing. Thank you, Ms. Sherman and everybody for your time.
Thanks, Karen.
Kelly Pearson, you're up.
Awesome. Okay, thanks for having me here tonight. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So I'm here asking the school board to vote tonight to give parents the choice. I'm hoping that we can get some kids back in school using a hybrid model and also allow those parents that don't feel comfortable sending their kids back their remote learning option that allows them to either dial into the classes or to kind of tap into that other part of the hybrid learning. I have two boys that are going to be at TRS this year. And I feel very comfortable sending them back with safeguards that the SAU presented. I feel like there is a lot of redundancy in the plan that they put forward where having kids wear masks and be six feet apart is, you know, if one of those fails, the other one is in place. I do believe that when making the decision, that you guys should be looking at the Pembroke numbers and the surrounding areas in New Hampshire to get an idea of how COVID is affecting our community. I see that there are daycares open, summer camps open, sports have started back up. And churches are being filled as well. So there is a lot of people gathering in the state of New Hampshire. And I feel that we can come up with a safe way or safer way to send our kids back. I also want to say that the remote learning doesn't work for a lot of people. It requires parent involvement to be successful. And a lot of kids don't have that, the parents home that can help them. It leaves out a big part of our student base.
Sorry, that's two minutes.
Okay, so I think that you really need to to keep in mind that kids are going to be left at home and remote learning is not going to work for them. Thank you.
Thanks, Colleen. Josh says we've got like five or six more. I think that's, we're getting close to the end here. If you have, if you're still on the fence, if you're going to want to add something to the conversation, please hit that hand up button now. We're getting close to wrapping it up, I think. And with that, we're ready for the next one.
Allison Jelineus, you're next.
Thank you guys for having time to let us speak in this forum. I just want to say I'm from Pembroke, New Hampshire, and I'm a Pembroke educator over at Pembroke Academy. At this time, I'm for 100% remote learning and I want to say thank you for your previous vote. I'd like you to uphold that tonight. Logistically, I just don't see how we can go back safely at this point, either full time or in a hybrid model. And I, I know that people outside the schools may feel like they, you know, they're comfortable with it. But inside the schools, when you're there- But inside the schools, when you're there, you understand all the different things. Even at half capacity, Pembroke Academy would have 500-plus people there every single day. And we don't have the ability to have students stay six feet apart during passing times. There are logistical problems with them, how lunches would take place. And I think that we are kind of discounting the fact that we do have perhaps 50% of our staff who are either high-risk or immunocompromised, which is a considerable large number, including every single one of our substitute teachers. So, you know, we need to think about that as well. And I would say literally 90%, if not more, of our paraprofessionals. You know, just the considerations. A lot of people here have talked about their discontent with the way remote learning went in the spring. That wasn't true remote learning. That was crisis teaching. And I believe that with some time and preparation, remote learning could look very different in the fall. In addition, tonight, we have 200-plus people on this meeting, but we chose to do this meeting remotely. In the email that I received, it said because high numbers were anticipated and it was for public safety.
Sorry, Allison, that's two minutes.
Guys, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Allison.
I would like to give Christine Gamlin another shot. It was a while ago that we tried and it didn't work. So if she's still willing, your floor is now yours. Christine Gamlin, are you out there?
I can still, she's unmuted, but I don't hear or see anything. Christine and everybody, of course, if you don't get a chance to speak tonight, or if you're not comfortable speaking tonight, email the board, email the administration. But I think we can move on, Josh.
Next would be John Harrington.
Hello, good evening. I just want to say, my name's John Harrington. I live on Third Range Road in Pembroke. And I want to thank you to the board and thank you to the administrators and faculty and the teachers. I mean, you're going to be frontline people whether you like it or not. I'd like to put my support behind a term I'm trying to teach my four-year-old called patience. I'd like, I saw the, the hybrid model and I think it's got a lot of holes. Some of the holes were what happens if the teacher comes down with COVID? What happens if a family member in a school class becomes with COVID? What happens? Do they all take 14 days? There's a lot of questions that just, we don't have answers for yet. And it seems like there's, you know, there's a lot of people that want their kids to go back. Well, I, I would urge the board to say remote learning for a few weeks and then let's go into a hybrid mode when we have the right plan. The reason why our numbers look the way that they do is because we made the hard decisions in March. We shut things down. We started social distancing. We did the right things quickly and deliberately with right plans to add in. You can't just throw everything back. I know there's a lot of parents that are afraid of their kids being home and I understand that. My heart goes out to them. But I think as a community, we have to think of the greater whole and the health of our students and our teachers. And there's a lot more riding on this than just sending back school. So I would just say to the board, please, let's, let's not rush into anything. Let's take our time. Let's let the administration come up with a plan. Let's start remote learning the right way in the beginning. Let's see where other communities at in October and then let's start easing back into school because I want to see the kids go back to school as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, John.
Next is Chrissy. It's just one, one name, Chrissy?
Hi, Chrissy Burgess. I am in Pembroke. I have a TRS kid and a kid at PA. I've heard a lot of other nurses here, also a nurse working in a large hospital in Manchester. And I would say my experience has been a little bit different and I have a very healthy respect for what I have seen in terms of COVID for our patients and our staff. I am fully in support of our kids going back remote when we are ready for it. I'm sorry, going back hybrid when we are ready for it. There are too many holes right now. There are too many unanswered questions about how we make it safe for them and for the teachers. For example, we know that testing in the state is 10 to 15 days behind. If we have a kid or a teacher show up with a sore throat, that kid or teacher is now excluded from the classroom for at least 10 to 15 days. If it's a teacher, who teaches your kids for the next two weeks? We really need to fill in those holes of how these things work. Who keeps the kids separate in the hallway? Who cleans the bathroom every time someone goes? I really would like to see my kids go back to school. They did not do well with remote learning. But I think at this point, there are a lot of things that we need to address before we can do that safely for everyone. Also, that remembering that our teachers need to be ready to go back. They need to tell us what they need to feel safe in those buildings with our kids and we need to help make that happen. Just telling them, go back and see what happens is not a good plan. We had a handful of nurses at our hospital get sick and miss months of work. And I don't think at this point that that's a reasonable thing to ask our teachers to do. And I guess that's, that, that's our stance at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel Hamilton, you're next.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Hamilton and I'm a Pembroke resident. As an educator myself and a mom of an incoming kindergartner, I'm a proponent for Pembroke adopting a hybrid model. My rationale for this is that having reduced percentage of the students in the building allows for social distancing in many cases. Also, the weather in the fall in New Hampshire allows for flexibility in instruction, potentially using indoor and outdoor spaces at times. The hybrid model could provide students an opportunity to meet with their teachers and portions of their class. The time used to train the students in how to participate in remote learning successfully. Should the schools in New Hampshire close by region or across the state again, a hybrid model allows for the ability to pivot to either of the other models. I know that surveys have been sent to parents in other school districts regarding bus transportation to see if parents would be able to transport their students. So they have a better count as to whether or not the busing of students will be an issue. So maybe that is something Pembroke could consider doing if they haven't done it already. I'm an incoming mom here, so thanks so much for your time in organizing this meeting for us.
Thanks, Rachel. Just a couple left.
Brian G., you're up.
Thank you. This is Brian Gleaton. I'm from Pembroke, New Hampshire. First off, I would like to show my full support in the children returning to school 100%. However, my main concern is the perceived complete lack of transparency we've seen from all areas during the pandemic. We keep being reassured that the fall learning was crisis learning and it will be different this time. However, we have had no type of plan or education on what different this time means. So the perception is either A, at best, they have a plan and are unwilling to share it, or at worst are completely unprepared for the upcoming school year that's only four weeks away. Please, moving forward from all sides, be as transparent, as open as possible so parents can make informed decisions on what needs to be done in the best interest of their children moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Joe Manable, you're next.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, Joe Montambo here from Chichester. I appreciate you guys taking the time to hear me out. I sent an email to the board the other day. A few things I want to point out. One, many people mentioned holes in the plan. And I think this is an ongoing plan. I think there's an opportunity for people to speak up. If you see gaps in that plan, please reach out to the administration. Help to fill those gaps. My other concern is that right now, the plan is we're gonna take two weeks of remote learning. What does that tell us? The only thing I see that telling us is that maybe it's done better than it was in the spring. It's not gonna tell you anything in terms of if there's gonna be any sort of outbreaks, is anybody having it? Because nobody's gonna be in the building. So that's the challenging areas. It doesn't really give us anything to see where things go at this point. That's certainly something to think about. Again, appreciate the time. I think take the information that was given tonight. Take some time to think about it and maybe make a decision after processing a little bit more. The follow-up, if you will. Thanks again. My, my thoughts are behind a hybrid. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Mark Dumont, you're up.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Mark Dumont, Donna Drive, Pembroke, New Hampshire. I want to thank the school board for giving this some more consideration and for letting everybody chime in. I'm for, I'm for open up in full with thoughtful restrictions. I'm also for allowing any at-risk teachers to run their remote. I think we need to do full and that, and remote at the same time. And the reason why I think this is, it's important to start the school year in full at the beginning of the year before cold and flu season. And the reason why I say this is, is because restrictions are gonna evolve. When we're talking about state guidelines for my employer and my employer owns a couple of companies where I have to go work around. And no employer follows all the guidelines there is able to, nor will the school, school be able to. There's just, the, the guidelines are guidelines. It's, you use what you can and, and, and then you're left to innovate. Because you, like with my employers, you gotta be functional. The school's gotta be functionable. And I want the schools to open up early because we're gonna get a good idea of really where we're at early. We don't want to wait a couple of weeks and get close to cold and flu season. The other thing I want, I want, so, so I want to stress is choice. Parents do know what's best for their, for their, for their children, and I think that's just gonna bring us all together because we're gonna have two sides making two systems strong. The thing that's gonna make, um, the thing that's gonna make our remote strong is participation. If you just go with completely remote, we're not gonna have participation. The reason why I say this is, like for instance, my wife and I are required to work because of this, we're not gonna be able to participate. If you pick remote, you're gonna be leaving children behind. I know, I know no one wants to do that and we shouldn't do that. We should lead the way here. We have an opportunity to do the right thing and let the parents decide and do the right thing. The parents always gonna do us best for their children. So if things aren't working out, everybody's gonna go to one way or another.
Sorry, that's two minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Josh, how are we looking?
I believe that was our last one that was either hand up. So I believe we covered everybody that had their hand up. Would be the people who did call in, which we don't have a true way of just knowing who they are.
Yeah. There's, there's a fair amount. Josh, is there a way to, I don't know the best way, can we unmute all of the call-in users or a few at a time and just see if anybody is, has something that they'd like to contribute?
Hey, Andy, I have an email question. Community member. This is Sandy.
Okay, if you want to go ahead and just state that.
So Lauren Dwyer said her internet is acting up. She can't access the meeting. She would like to thank the school board for prioritizing the health and the health of staff and our children. Parents with children that have differing abilities should be aware that they may call an IEP meeting at any time to discuss different learning options. Special education is not a location, but a menu of supports and services. These services, though not ideal, can be delivered remotely. I support remote learning and encourage our board to stay the course. Thank you for all you do and be well. Lauren Dwyer.
Thanks, Sandy. So Josh is unmuting the phone users. This is gonna be a little bit hairy. I'll let you know right off the bat, but I don't want to miss out because there looks to be a good 15 or 20 of you. So if you are on your phone, if you know that you don't have something that you want to contribute, if you know how to use the mute button on your phone, go ahead and do that. If you would like to say something, please go ahead and I guess stick your, your name and then I'll try to call on somebody that has done so and we'll give that person the floor and then we can move on to, you know, we can set that aside. And we can, we'll try to work through this as best that we can. So I think, it looks like all the phone users are unmuted. If you have something you want to contribute, go ahead and say your name.
I'm on the WebEx, but did you not see my hand up?
No, but Jamie, go ahead. I can, I'll give you your time.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Jamie Weingartner, North Pembroke Road from Pembroke. I have a senior at PA, so probably a little different perspective than having a little one. So my experience is different than others because I don't have a young child that I need to supervise or teach. Mine is pretty self-sufficient with her work, so I just, my experience with the emergency remote learning in the spring, I would not say was that successful because she works her butt off as a student and she takes AP and honors classes and she's trying to get into the best college possible. And unfortunately, because her teachers weren't consistent and one of them was MIA, her GPA was impacted. And that's just unfortunate because of remote learning. So I am all for the children getting back in the classroom in some fashion. I don't think it's fair to our children, teachers or parents just to say 100% remote and reassess every two weeks. I know we wear masks in public and I feel that teachers should be able to wear a mask in the classroom. I would ask that the survey results be taken into consideration. I know I've taken three of them in the past few months, one for the state and two for the school district, I believe. Also, whatever is chosen, I think training and plans need to be made. I'm a little concerned because we're almost in August and I haven't, you know, heard of any plans for, you know, when the kids go back to school, what the procedures are gonna be, training for teachers. So that's concerning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody on the phone have something that they would like to contribute?
Andrew?
Yes.
This is Carl Schaefer.
Go ahead, Carl.
Two minutes.
Sure.
My name's Carl Schaefer. I am on the Allentown School Board. I am also the Chair of the Exec Committee. With what's going on with COVID in the state and as far as my experience with the kids, it is that I would definitely put my hat behind a hybrid to start and reassess from there. I definitely think that the kids need to get back to school. It's a lot of experiences that I've heard from other people in town that the remote learning did not work very well. And we need to get the kids back in. I understand the whole issue with masks and keeping a social distance. And I believe that's gonna be work for everybody. I hope that they eventually get back full-time. I think they need to be in the school as far as I'm concerned. I understand that some people were expressing their interest as far as when we closed in March, and that was an all-school board decision, not just a Pembroke decision. I do think, is that my turn? I'm sorry.
No, I think people are leaking through, Carl.
So that's basically it. I just think that the kids do need to get back. I did have a parent come to me at the end of the last school year when they knew they were not going to be going back for the rest of the year. He basically told me that his child stopped learning and actually went and got a job at that point. So I don't think that the remote learning is, is going to work, you know, for everybody. It may work for a very small percentage. But at this point, I'm putting my hat behind a hybrid and hope to we get back 100%.
Thanks, Carl. One more call for the folks on the phones.
This is Jenny Manzali. Can I say something?
Absolutely.
Cool, thank you. Thank you, school board members, for all of your time and effort taking care, trying to take care of our kids K through 12. And I would just urge everybody to please consider suggesting what you think could work in regards to hybrid, hybrid versus remote. We all know, I'm an educator too. We all know that remote teaching is not ideal. So instead of just saying it didn't work, it didn't work, like, just please try to change your thought process. And please consider what you think the teachers can do to properly engage your students, your children. So just flip the way you think, people. Secondly, I urge the school board committee to please consider going remote for possibly five through 12, grades five through 12, and spreading K through four among the three school buildings. Are you kidding me? This is just my opinion. I believe that the littles need the most developmentally. They need the most support, I think, in regards to how to process all these feelings. High schoolers have been in school much longer. They have a better grasp at how to handle all of this. And they're more independent. And that's what I would like to contribute. Thank you so much, school board.
Thank you. Christine Gamelin, we've, it looks like you're back. Did you still have something that you wanted to contribute from? I think we kind of cut out last time you were given a chance to speak. Okay, then one more call for the phones. Anybody on the call-in lines? I'm sorry, who's this?
Lindsay Hawkins.
Yes, go ahead, Lindsay.
Hi, I'm a senior at Pembroke. And obviously, this is a very controversial issue, but I really think that we need to go back. There's so many reasons that this is just affecting the student body and we need it. We need something to look forward to. I get that there are holes. I get that there are issues, but I think that we need to all work together and come up with something. We need a solution. We need to go back.
Thanks, Lindsay. All right. I've said one more like three times, but still one more call for the call-in users. Going once, going twice. All right, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment section of the meeting and move on to the next agenda item, which is board discussion. I guess we, let's see, it's hard, hard to see hands here. I think I'm just going to go down the line at first and see if anybody has anything that they would like to say. I will start with April, if you're there.
I'm here. I just, again, want to thank everyone for spending their evening with us tonight. I think it's important to consider what you all want. And to me, it doesn't matter what you've said, so I want to thank you for that.
Great. Ann?
Andy, I'd like to make a motion. We've heard from, I've been tallying the people up and it's pretty much hand in hand, fully open or remote. So I would like to make a motion to open Pembroke Schools back up to our students to receive an on-campus instruction and provide an off-campus remote learning option run by the Pembroke School District to allow access to local education for those who feel like it is safe to return to the school.
This is April, second that motion.
Let me just ask for point of clarification. Maybe Patty can help me. I, I believe, and maybe April too, you're pretty good with looking up the policies real quick. I, I think that a member of the affirmative vote from the last meeting would have to ask to reconsider the question if it's to change the effect of that motion, which is currently to open schools remotely.
That's correct.
So I think I technically can't accept that motion just now, Ann, but hold my thought. Ann, do you want to make any comments before we move on? Sorry, I can't hear you.
I didn't hear what, what Patty said when you were, when you said that we have to do a different, a different motion or different reconsideration.
Yeah, sorry. I said that Andy was correct. So one of the three, so Amy, Jean or Andy would need to make a motion to reconsider the vote from the last meeting.
Thank you.
Andy, it's me. I don't, I do support what Ann's saying right now, but at this point in time, I'm not. Any discussion we could have tonight on this or any vote, I think would be irresponsible on my part to move forward on. I do believe, after hearing the public comment, that this might be able to work. But we are still missing a lot of pieces here. I don't have any information from the last recent survey that went out to the parents. I have no input from the teachers as to who would be feeling comfortable to come back to school and who wouldn't, how that's going to work. There's a lot of questions up in the air before we move forward on this, but take a vote on how we're going to do something. So what I would like to do is give direction to administration. From what I saw on social media, the, the recent survey that went out to parents, the tally is going to be skewed, people taking multiple, multiple surveys and turning them in. Is there a way that a survey can go out through Alma to each student's email that the parent fills out and returns to the school? And can we get a survey out to the teachers? There are bargaining issues that are going to go along with this. So we need to know where we're coming from before we move forward. We need to have the background. And again, I don't disagree with Ann's sentiment. I do feel it may be safe to open the schools. But last week I voted to go 100% remote because we are lacking certain information that would allow us to go forward in any other direction.
Thanks, Christine. Patty, I want to give you a chance to respond, but I want to get through everybody first. So I think Amy or the one left.
Thanks, Sandy. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. I appreciate that. I do have a couple of comments to make. I wanted to say, you know, as we're moving forward, I really think the biggest thing that I have at the forefront in my mind is that we're in completely uncharted waters. I don't think that I or us as a school board knows better than the state or federal government. But I do think that none of us really knows. Nobody has an answer to this unprecedented situation that we find ourselves in. And no country has ever tried to reopen schools with the current surge of cases that we have nationwide. New Hampshire, I feel so fortunate for so many of us in New Hampshire. We're doing a lot better than many other states. But we are not completely separate from the rest of our country. Numbers are rising and it could be that numbers in New Hampshire are rising as well. And we're just not ready. We, there are so many important questions about the details of having kids back in our buildings for day-to-day instruction that remain unanswered. With all of this, the safest option, in my opinion, is remote instruction to start. I totally acknowledge and agree with all of the true reasons why remote instruction is less than ideal. Parents and other caregivers that work outside of the house and need income to make ends meet, that is true. Most kids probably don't do as well, either educationally or emotionally. That is true. Families may not have enough devices or the internet may not be strong enough. All these things are true. But that doesn't mean that safety issues go away in light of these legitimate concerns. We've already touched upon, and I'm not going to belabor the point, that the remote instruction that we're envisioning, while not detailed in a plan yet, what we discussed last week is that it would be significantly different and way better. I myself have been working from home. I had to labor through the remote instruction with my child who has a 504. You know, it was, I laughed about that parent who made the comment about there is not enough alcohol in the world. It was very, very difficult and it should be better this fall. So our job now, I see our job as a school board, moving forward to work on our SMART goals. So these are goals that are strategic, measurable, achievable, relevant and time-based goals that I hope will have our kids in school sometime in the one to three-month timeframe. And I really hope that when they get into school, they're going to stay in school. I think it is much more important to have a slow and steady wins-the-race approach here, rather than they're in school, then they're out of school because we were just a little bit premature and we didn't have all of our ducks in a row. So I would like to work with my boardmates in helping the administration and the board put together, what is it that we need to be safe with letting the schools, letting the kids back into school? So that's where I'm at. And I'm so grateful for all of the community participating tonight. It is always welcome for me and I know from the rest of my boardmates to hear all of the public comments tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. I'll start off my, by first saying, we all received a lot of emails this week. And I want to apologize. I literally, if I would have sat down and replied to each one, I wouldn't have made it in time for this meeting tonight. So I want to stress, from my point of view, and I'm sure that the other board members would say the same, every one of them is being read, every one of them is being considered. Just not everyone is being replied to. So to give a quick synopsis before, I guess I'm at, after hearing what everybody had to say tonight, my main concerns are around safety and around education, obviously, and around consistency. And consistency, I think Amy touched on it, is maybe the piece that has not been talked about a lot here. I think that having at least a 100% remote option provides both safety and consistency. I think that there are students who, their educational value, their educational quality depends on consistency and routine, especially in the younger grades. And so it's my thought that we need to be able to provide at least an option that people can rely on to be there and be the same from the first day of school to the last day of school. And that also gives parents a consistent model to plan for. So where I'm at currently, I, I think that it'd probably be, I could probably support some sort of hybrid model. But if and only if there were also an option for 100% remote for the entire school year for the families that want it for safety reasons or consistency reasons. I also feel that if we have a 100% remote option available that's being done every day, then in what I would consider the likely event that the school has to close for some period of time because of a case being present in the school, the teachers that have been teaching in person would have colleagues that have been teaching in the new enhanced, better remote model since the beginning of the school year. And those colleagues could lean on each other so that the ones that were coming out of school, as it were, wouldn't be starting fresh. We would have a more fine-tuned remote model in place in case it were needed. Also, I'm hearing from the community that choice is what's, and I would agree with that. So again, I think if there were a hybrid model and there were also a 100% remote choice, that would help most families. And I guess the last piece, my concerns with the hybrid model are many. The safety of the students being one, the safety of the staffs being one. A couple of people touched on the possible staffing issues we would have. That's definitely something to keep in mind. I think it'd be pretty complex to schedule the classes and manage the workloads of the teachers and things like that. And as a couple of people mentioned, I also think that there are significant financial commitments to any plan that has a decent number of people in the building. The, you know, the screens. I heard, I saw an interview on WMUR with either principal or superintendent from another district, which was admittedly a bigger district than ours, but still, they had figured they would need to spend like $20,000 per month just on masks. I'm sure that's not the case here, but even if it were half that, you know, we're, we're a tax-conscious town and that money is going to have to come from somewhere like somebody else mentioned. So that's my personal thoughts and feelings and taking into what the consideration we've heard tonight. That being said, I do think, so I've also, I will say, and I'll let Ms. Sherman talk in a minute. I have heard from her that the administration has been, you know, finalizing much more details around the plans that, that they have for these different models. And they plan to get us those for the next meeting. I would urge them to please have those available to the board members as well as the community, if that is reasonable, by the end of the day on Friday, even if they're not 100% finished. I think that I would be open to reconsideration of the question at our next meeting. That would give me a week to digest some more of what I've heard here. And it would also give me time, assuming that those plans don't come to us at the meeting, to digest the plans that have been put in place by our administration.
Andy, this is Ann. I have a question. I don't mean to interrupt, but there's a lot of information that we heard from both Allentown School Board members. So I think we need to consider what is happening when they're discussing the area agreement. So we heard tonight, I have answered every single email that I've received. Everybody wants more information. So I think before we end this meeting tonight, we need to make sure there's a spokesperson. We need to have guidelines on how quickly we're going to get this information out to people. Another concern I had was in our budget on page 57 of the 2021 budget book. We have revenues for PA is 5.4 million in revenue. For the area students coming in, what's going to happen if even half of those students all of a sudden now take V-Lax because we won't open Pembroke Academy? There's a lot of, there's a lot of issues that we need to discuss. And just saying we'll go remote and we'll talk about it in two weeks, we're not planning.
I hear you. My, so we do have a meeting a week from tonight, just to throw that out there. And I think where I'm coming from is, and kind of, I think it's where April and yourself were last week. There's a ton of information coming in and I'm, I'm personally not comfortable making a decision at this time. I think I would even go as far as to say that the decision last week may have been made in haste. And if I, if the administration can confirm that there is much more information coming our way in the coming week, I would like to see that and digest it before I, before I vote on a plan. But I, I agree, Ann, that these things need to be considered. I would be interested to hear Patty's point of view on, you know, the SAU exec board and what their role is in this and the AREA agreement. And I suppose I can open it up to Patty and then we'll come back to the board to see if there are other questions.
Thank you. So I'm going to take advantage of the fact that we still have over 200 people here to sort of go back and recap where we're at and, and how we got here. At the last meeting, we presented a plan. It was three or four pages. It was a proposal. It wasn't the plan. So some other school districts have released plans and have given, been given permission to move forward. Our SAU is a little bit unique in the fact that the local control is not at the SAU level. The local control goes down to the school boards and each school board makes its own decisions. And they have traditionally made the decision not to go as an SAU and make decisions together. So the co-supervisor and I, Peter took his districts, I took my districts. We all. We all came together this summer. We had 25 members of the leadership team throughout the entire SAU meeting together. We had a full two days where we talked about all three options. Last week, we brought the exact same outline and proposal to all five of our districts in our SAU. At the top, it indicated that it was a general opening guideline, and upon approval, a plan would be written. Our recommendation as an entire SAU was to start with a hybrid model. We gave the outline of some of the things that we've considered. We talked about the fact that we use the Pediatrics, the CDC, Health and Human Services, all of the guidance from the state and federal agencies that were available to us. We looked at some other school districts. We pulled together all the facilities directors from all of our districts. School nurses are meeting. So there's been a ton of work that's been going on since school got out. I also want to mention that teachers are not under contract right now, and it would be a mistake if we didn't acknowledge the many, many hours that they have spent working with us in the schools on these plans, and they're under no obligation to do so. So I don't want anyone to have the impression that we don't have any plans or that we haven't been working on plans because we have. And we've been working, your administration, teachers have been working tirelessly. We didn't present all of the details because what we had intended to do was by the end of July, the beginning of August, to have a plan to move forward. We proposed a hybrid, and that was not approved to move forward. We are working on all three models. We are continuing the details of the hybrid model because that is what the entire SAU decided to pursue. Obviously, the board has decision-making. If the board chooses to go remote, then we will begin working on that. We don't have teachers right now, so it's difficult to train and plan when our staff isn't back yet. So, you know, we may need some time in the beginning. If we decide to go remote, we may be asking you to look at the school calendar so that when teachers come back, we have a week together to start, get ready for remote learning, that we don't, just don't have that time right now unless it's volunteer time. So the, there was some discussion about the survey. At these leadership meetings, we talked about the fact that the SAU was very similar. When we surveyed in June, it was about a third, a third, and a third, right? Remote, hybrid, and we've seen that in all of our surveys that people are very divided. And I understand, we understand that and we respect that. The survey results have been posted. It was certainly, there's been discussion about transparency. Those did not get posted. It was an oversight. All of the schools have posted their results for you to take a look at. Those results were not meant to be a vote. It was meant to be information. And when we gathered that information and saw that there was a pretty equal split, we knew that we had a lot of work to do and that we had to put all of our power into all three options because those were obviously all on the table. So the draft plan was given, the outline was given at the meeting. We posted it after the meeting. We did put out another survey because we had informed the community that we felt like we needed some snapshots in time, that that survey was a month old, and we were pretty confident that people have been changing their minds right along. Unfortunately, we did use the Google survey, and we were made aware that it was shared on social media. The link was forwarded. People were taking it multiple times, trying to, I guess, you know, get their point across and get more votes for how they were feeling. There's 2,300 responses on that survey. Clearly, there's not 2,300 people in our three schools with children. But interestingly enough, the split right now, the last time that I looked at it, was 53% in-person, 25% hybrid, and 21% remote. So even though it's probably been taken multiple times by multiple people, it's still, you know, a roughly half and half wanting remote and half of some type and half wanting to be back in school. The other thing I wanted to mention was the concern about special education services, and that is absolutely part of our planning. But I just want to make clear that that's not the job of the administration or the superintendent to determine specialized instruction. There is a special ed team that is, there's a legal requirement for the members of that team, and every single student that's receiving special ed services will have a team meeting, and their plan will be reviewed, and they will get their services. It's not my job, it's not the board's job, it's not the administrator's job to determine what those are. Those are the special ed team decisions. I will certainly pass on the concerns to the assistant superintendent who oversees special services to make sure that she knows that their people are anxious and they want to know what the services are being planned for their students. I will pass that, absolutely pass that along to her. I would take questions from the board now. Just know that we met yesterday again, and we're talking about finalizing as many plans as we can to outline what the hybrid model would look like, and we will continue that work. If you have questions in the meantime, I'm happy to try and answer them.
Thanks. Go ahead, Amy.
Thanks, Andy. Patty, can you, I'd like to echo something that Jean said, which is to get, I guess, like a census of how many teachers have, you know, are at risk and, and either, I don't, I don't like to use words like feel like they can't come in, but for lack of a better word, you know, how many teachers feel like they can't be in the building? And not, and I don't mean to say teachers, I mean all of the educational professionals. And if we can put that information, that would really help inform things moving forward.
So our HR director is working on that now. It's going to go out to all, you know, 750 employees that we have. We're trying to be sensitive to not collect personal and private information. So she's going to actually send out the guidance poster that has six conditions or criteria to meet if you're thinking about taking leave. And she's just going to ask staff members, do you, you know, do you have one of these criteria to be met? And if so, please let us know. And then she will work privately with those individuals to see what they need for accommodations in the workplace. Then we will absolutely have a better idea. Because we, as much as we would love to offer choice in the perfect world, I would love to be able to, you know, have it all work out. But we would have to make sure that we can staff that. And if we had enough teachers that wanted to work remotely and it matched up with the number of students and in the right grade levels, we would be absolutely on board with that. But we, we don't want to make promises that we can't staff. So that's something that we're still, we're going to have to work on when we have a sense of, you know, how many people want remote and how many teachers are interested in remote or need to be remote.
Andy, can I make a comment what Amy is asking? My employer has gone to all of us who work at my employer, and they've asked, you know, do you feel comfortable coming back? Do you have an issue? Do you have this and that? They're not going to share that with anyone else, you know, outside of HR. They're just going to say this many people have this, this many people, you know, feel this, you know, these conditions, they can't come back in. So I think what Amy was asking is 100% dead. You know, you're not going to disclose their names or anything like that, but just to get a majority because someone said earlier that 99% of the parents are compromised. So that's, I appreciate you asking that question.
April, it looks like you're unmuted, but I can't hear you. I'm not sure if you're talking or not. Looks like April is talking, but we can't hear, or at least I can't hear her. All right, April, I'm going to move on to Jean. If you have the opportunity to call in, that would be great, or I don't know, disconnect, reconnect. I guess, you want to go ahead? Jean?
I did, I did not have a question.
I was just giving you a chance, if you had anything you wanted to ask Patty.
No, I don't think so unless anyone has questions. Again, I just, I want to leave everyone with the understanding about how many hours went into talking about this over the summer. And people are continuing to work and we'll continuing, you know, we will continue to outline all three options and try to give you more detail at the next meeting, and certainly will go in the direction that we're given.
Yep, April, a minute. She was going to log out and log back in, and I want to give her a chance to talk. Also, I would, I would guess echo what I said earlier. I think that if we, the board and the public, if possible, can get those plans before the weekend so that we can have some time to go through and digest them. I think that Mr. Marston said at the last meeting, you know, that he would prefer a decision so that we could kind of put a weight on our efforts and move in one direction. I'm going to have, I assume that the decision is going to be reconsidered at the next meeting. I'm going to have a hard time making a decision about these plans if the first time that I see them is at that meeting. So even if they're not done, even if they need some tweaking after the fact, even if what we get Friday is not exactly what, you know, you present on Tuesday, I think that both the board members and the community would benefit from having those with a couple of days to review them before the meeting. And do we have April? April, you're back. Do you unroot and see if we can hear you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yay! Thank you very much. I just, there's a lot of background noise. I don't know if anyone else hears that. Yes, no, a lot of background noise.
There was, I think it's, I think somebody.
A lot of echoing, a little better. Can you guys hear me now without the echo?
Yep.
Okay, so I just wanted to address my fellow school board members, and just to remind us all that the function of the school board is to represent the vision and the values of our community. We were never selected to be educational experts. And as school board members, we have a duty to ensure that our students within the district receive their constitutionally entitlement to an adequate education. And personally, I don't feel that leaving our students without access to meaningful instructions for weeks or possibly months is even acceptable, and that parents know their children best, and that what we need to do is give the parents the opportunity to choose the best pathway to accessing their students' education. And what I would even go further to say is we've talked about micromanaging. Guys, yes, this is not the time to micromanage, but this is the time to give our superintendent the plan that, an idea of the plan that we want her to come back to the table with. Because we've got a lot of hard work to do, and we've got to start doing it. And it's not our responsibility to write a plan. It is our responsibility to approve it, but we do need to give direction to our administration. And so I would like to see us move forward and be more productive and give some of that guidance tonight on what we are looking for. Thank you.
Hey, this is Anne, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Anne. Sorry, I muted myself.
That's all right. Do we have the results for the current surveys? Because I don't know the dates the parents had to fill them out by.
Patty?
Anne, are you talking about the one that just went out?
Yes.
Yes, that was the one that I was talking about earlier that had 2,310 responses. And it was just the one question. So it was 53.7% wanted full in-person learning, 25% hybrid, and 21.3% 100% remote. But I'll just say again, I questioned the validity of the survey at this point.
Right. I didn't know if it just, if it had a date by when it needed to be received by, because the last one you need to receive by June 20. My second question is, is that survey also going to go out to the Pembroke, excuse me, the Pembroke Academy students who are not in Pembroke? Like Allentown, Chithestor, even?
Yeah, that's a great question. Yep, it did. It went to all the Pembroke Academy students, so it didn't matter what town you were from. We sent it out with our One Call Now system.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Great, others?
Andy, it's Amy, I had a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
I had some significant concern with the recent survey that went out, apart from the issue that Patty already mentioned, that it was, it had sort of like an unlimited nature. The wording of the question was, in my view, really problematic. I'm in favor of fully remote schools. I could find some ways to find some hybrid or choice options, but I would have answered that survey full-time. Because that is what that's. I don't think that that's the right decision during a pandemic. But I just wanted to raise that concern about the wording of the survey. And so when we do future surveying, if that could be improved, that would be great. I really resonate with what April is saying, that our job is to sort of like point the ship in the right direction and then let the administrators do the driving of the ship. And I'm looking forward to doing more of that with the board. And then the third thing I just wanted to comment on is I wanted to, I'm assuming that the rest of the board feels the same way, but everybody, please chime in. I remember when I was running for this elected seat, one of the frequent complaints that I heard, and I heard it a lot tonight, and I think it's a legitimate one, is that there is not enough outgoing communication from the district to the parents. And I would like us to work together to find some ways to solve that. I don't think that right now is the exact time to do that, but maybe we could put that as, you know, request a proposal from the administration about that, or put it on our agenda for the next school board meeting. You know, is it time that the school board maybe engages through social media? Is there a way that we can get materials that the board receives out to the public in a just sort of easier way? I think that that would be, I think that would serve all of us really well moving forward.
Thanks, Amy. I would agree with that. I think that an agenda item fairly soon about communications, I think, from the administration to the board, from the board to the administration, from the board to the public, from the administration to the public, all of these things, I think we can definitely, I think it would be worthwhile to take a B cap.
Andy, can I just add that the New Hampshire School Board Association workshop that I just attended had guidelines on what the school districts should be doing, the information that should be going out to the residents, basically as soon as we have our meetings.
Great, yeah, I'm sure I could go dig that up, Anne, but if you have a link handy and want to send that to all of us, that'd be awesome.
I'll send them in the morning, thank you.
Patty, just quickly, how many students are spread between the three schools in Pembroke?
1,500-ish?
All right, and we received 2,310 surveys, so it sort of invalidates the survey itself, correct?
So I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't say that because of the number that is, that would be unusual. But I say that because it was reported to me that the survey was on Facebook and that the link was shared, and that it was open so that people could, people commented. I didn't read it, but I was informed that people were commenting that they were taking it multiple times. That's why I just questioned the validity of, you know, it. We need a different mechanism next time. You mentioned Alma. Unfortunately, we have a third of our parents who never activated their Alma account, and that's why we didn't use it this time. So that's something that Josh is going to help us work on in the future, a different way to take surveys.
All right, yeah, I guess, but there was a lot of commentary going on in the, in the chat function concerning the validity of it. So I just wanted to clarify, you know, parents received, you know, if you've got four children in school, you can fill that out four times.
Absolutely.
That equals the total number of students between, spread between the three schools. So we end up with 2,310. That means other people were filling it out when they shouldn't have been, so. All right, that was it, thank you.
Andy, this is April. Just a point, I've heard that Facebook is where that was. I actually found that survey on the Pembroke Hill School website. So it was publicly available there. It wasn't, you know, limited to Facebook being passed around. There were other public places that people could access that survey.
Yeah, I think, I don't want to speak for Patty, but I, what I heard, which I think is what Patty was trying to say, is I saw and I, and people reported to me in my SAU email that there were people on Facebook admitting or saying out loud that they took it over and over again, that they forwarded it to friends in Huxa and other towns that don't send kids here to take it. And so I, like I said, don't want to speak for Patty, but I was. And so I, I, like I said, don't want to speak for Patty, but I was, there were issues like that reported directly to me also.
This is April. I would like to move this conversation forward. I would like to make a motion that um, the Pembroke School Board give direction to our superintendent to come back prepared, well, Andy, you said the Friday before our next meeting, um, with a detailed plan for in-school learning, on-campus learning, as well as off-campus learning. Um, have that available for us and the community to review. Um, I think it needs to be more than just an outline. And also, the fact of the matter is, there's many plans out there. It's not something that has to be started from scratch. We can copy and borrow from plans that are already out there. Take the good that we think would be for our district. So I would like to give some direction to our superintendent.
Um, can we summarize that and say?
Um, I would, I would like to make a motion that the Pembroke School Board give direction to our superintendent to provide the school board with um, with reopening draft to reopen with pathways of learning being both on-campus learning and off-campus learning. And that that be due to this board by July, Friday, July the thirty-first, two twenty twenty.
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you, Anne. Any discussion around that before I call the roll?
Well, I'll, I'll discuss it a little bit. I, I, I would love to see that by Friday. Is it realistic? Like you said earlier, Andy, um, if the nuts and bolts still aren't attached yet, I still want to see it. I don't think we can have it fully detailed and in, implementable by Friday. Um, but yes, I would, you know, agree with April that I'd like to see something starting to get fleshed out so we can move forward uh, with the best plan possible that fits as many people, people's needs in the community as we can. No, we're not going to make everybody happy. But I think uh, the direction given will be helpful in getting us pointed in the right direction to make as most, many people have, happy as possible.
Any other comment before I take a vote? All right, uh, there's a motion on the floor. I'm going to paraphrase and trust that Sandy has the actual wording. But uh, there's a motion on the floor that we um, direct the superintendent to provide um, all plans, both remote and in-person by the close of business on Friday, July thirty-first, to the school board. And is that, is that it, April? Did I capture it?
And, and the community, she said.
And the community, thank you.
Right. And just to capture, it's not an either-or plan. This is a plan that provides parents the opportunity to choose the pathway for their students.
Okay, um, Sandy, are you on? Could you maybe just read it back for me?
Yes.
Yes.
A motion that the Pembroke School Board give direction to the superintendent to provide the school board and the community reopening drafts with pathways to consider learning on and off-campus. But with a choice by July thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Thank you. Um, on a roll call, as per the stipulations of the remote meeting.
More discussion, Andy? I'm sorry.
Yep, sure, go ahead.
Understand what the motion is. Okay, so um, April, or is, is your motion to direct, to have the school board direct the administration to make a plan that will then be made available to parents? And parents will choose full remote, full in-person, or a hybrid?
Uh, the motion is to, I didn't narrow it down that far, Amy. It was just to provide um, on-campus learning and off-campus learning. It's not a black or white situation. It's an opportunity to provide this board a way so that parents can choose the pathway for their child. Because honestly, what works for one child and one family may not work for the other child, just like we heard tonight. And we need to meet as many students' needs as we can in this community.
I, I agree with that. I, I still don't understand why, what do you mean? Can you explain when you say so that parents can choose based on the plan?
Right. What, the clarification is meant to say it's not a only, only on-campus learning or only hybrid, or excuse me, or only off-campus learning. A plan so that we could run both simultaneously. And that, in that case, it would provide parents with the opportunity to choose what is the best mode for their student to access their public education, which they're entitled to.
Andy, do you mind if I clarify something?
Go ahead.
So my, my understanding, thank you, Amy. I'm glad you asked for clarification. I thought that what April was asking for were both plans and not just one plan. I, I don't feel confident that we could provide something by Friday that would provide choice because we don't have the data on how many, we haven't asked parents what they would choose. We've asked their opinion on surveys. We haven't asked them to make a decision. And we don't know how many staff we would have that could teach remote, hybrid, both, neither. Um, I could give you the details that we're working on for each of those scenarios, but I, I could never guarantee that there would be enough staff um, to provide choice to everyone.
We're not looking for a guarantee. We are looking for a plan. Honestly, we don't know what's feasible until we have some numbers of how many students are coming back. We don't know that. I don't think it's a correct assumption to assume that all of our students will be back. We've already heard from parents who have chose private education. They'll be, we'll lose a lot of students. We need to meet the needs of all the students that we can.
I can just comment, um, I think we have a little bit of like a chicken and egg problem here. You know, um, parents may feel that they can't decide whether to enroll in a different school or go remote or do the hybrid because they don't know what those plans entail. And I hear Patty saying, we can't really uh, sort of flesh out those plans because we don't know the numbers associated with how many students and teachers would be available and opt to participate in the plans. Um, I think Patty, this, my opinion is that this lands on you to sort out as much of this as you possibly can with your team and put it into the best draft you possibly can. And we all acknowledge that there are a lot of variables. And then probably from there is gathering more parent input. But I think that that is, that ought to be discussed in our meeting in a week.
So if I could, go ahead, thank you, Patty. Um, if I could jump in, I'm not sure that, and correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know that we necessarily need a formal motion to simply give Patty some direction. Um, would, would it, would it please the board if we just went ahead and directed Patty to provide as many details on all of the plans that are currently in play that the administration has been working on to us by the end of the day on Friday?
This is April. No, we are behind the eight ball. We need to make clear what we are, we have to set that path. And we do have to make some hard demands of our administration. And that we have to ensure that children will receive an appropriate, meaningful education, public education. We have a duty to give that.
Sure, I, I understand that, but I also think that if the administration has been working on plans, even if they aren't the ones that we choose, or even if we said tonight, you know, no, we're definitely sticking to the remote option. Um, I would still want to see all of the plans that they've developed.
Chicken or the egg? Which comes first? Does the school board report to the superintendent? Or does the super, superintendent report to the school board?
I'd like to call the question. I think we have a motion. They have the second.
Okay, um, on a roll call vote, uh, Amy?
Oh.
Anne?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a no. So the motion carries. Um, Sandy, if you can make sure that Patty gets a copy of that language.
Will do.
So we will, uh, we will be provided some information before the weekend, um, both us and to the public. And I guess if, I think all that was on the agenda was a discussion by the board. If there's anything else anybody wants to bring up right now, I think now's the time.
We want the communication piece to fall by the wayside, Andy, so I just wanted to repeat my request that we put that on the next agenda. The, the improving communication piece.
Thanks.
I have a question, um, because we've had, I think the last count was two hundred and seventy-eight people on the meeting. Um, will this meeting be able to be viewed by the members um, of the community tomorrow on the SAU page? Um, or excuse me, Pembroke School District page?
You know, or Josh, if you're still on, um, can you let us know what the, what the turnaround time is for this to be posted?
Are you talking about the video in general?
Yeah.
Yeah, so uh, it's going to take some time uh, to render. Uh, it's done on the cloud. Uh, we will get notification. However, uh, depends how long it takes to render. Um, I would like to think that it would be within twenty-four hours at the minimum. Uh, well, I should say that, within that, within twenty-four hours, we should be able to post it. Um, and I should actually be able to save the chat as well and, and, and try to work that as an addendum.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Josh. I just knew that, you know, the parents are going to be asking, so it might save them from calling Patty or emailing to find out why it's not there yet. So if we just give them like a ballpark, thank you.
Andy, this is April. I would just like to, um, as a continuation of what Amy suggested regarding the communication. I know this board has not uh, done any kind of goal setting. Um, I think we have some important business to do and that's why that's been set aside. But I think it would be very helpful if we could develop some guiding principles that will help us um, in the upcoming tough days. Thank you.
Sure, I agree. Um, I, certainly not tonight, but I think that's a, a good place for us to get to. Um, you know, we've, we have been emergency for a while, but I think we need to settle into the fact that this isn't going away for a little bit. And we're going to still need to get on with regular business. So I guess uh, piggybacking on what April said, everybody, if you want to start thinking about goals for the board, um, we'll get that on an agenda soon and, and get some stuff on paper or on electrons, as it were.
Andy, I have a, a quick question. So if we continue with remote learning as, you know, we're going over right now, will this next school board and the continued school board meetings now continue to be remote? Because if we're doing remote learning, then it means the schools are shut down except for the, the special ed that are needed. So I think the residents would like to know if we're going to be meeting in person or remote.
Yep, so um, I think the motion from last time specifically said that the buildings would be closed. Um, I think that the, the things, the special ed and things like that were examples. But I think that in stark contrast to what the spring was like, the buildings would be open. I think, you know, I'm, I'm kind of going above my pay grade here, but I would assume, you know, there would be kind of appointments or whatever, and it's not, it wouldn't just be people coming in and out as they please. But we would be able to hold school board meetings in person. Personally, um, it's my intention, as long as we are allowed to do so by RFA, to keep them um, remote. I have, I, I'm not comfortable certainly being in a place where there's two hundred and seventy-five people. I don't think that attendance will stay there, but I think it will remain high until, at least until this issue is sorted out. Um, I'm not sure that we have a space that can reasonably accommodate that many people with social distancing guidelines. And also, um, I think general attendance is better at the meetings when we do do them remote. Even in some quote-unquote "normal" meetings, uh, we've had fifty, sixty people before, which we've never gotten in person. So I would say that's my intention. I suppose that's a, a discussion that we can have at the next. I do intend for the next meeting to be remote, but if you guys want to have a discussion about going forward after that, um, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I just wanted the public to know if we were remote or not, just for our next meeting, so they can be prepared.
Yep, my, yeah, my intention is to have the next meeting remote. I expect reasonable attendance. So yes, I, I plan to have the next meeting remote.
I just add, um, an important note on that is that there are some uh, legal restrictions based on, um, so if we meet in person, we have not yet found a adequate technological solution to let members of the public like call in or video into our meeting. We're working on that. Um, but right now, the only way that we can have people participate the way they did tonight is if the board is also participating remotely. So it is currently our best way to get max participation, which has been really terrific.
Anything else before we wrap up?
This is April. Again, I just want to express my sincere thanks for everyone's time and commitment for being here.
I agree, and um, a hundred and eighty people still on, just listening to the five of us ramble is fantastic. Um, like I said before, I think I speak on behalf of the whole board when I say, feel free to email us. We are reading everything. We may not be able to respond to each one, but um, we do want to hear what you have to say. We appreciate everybody on the line tonight, listening on the line tonight that took the time to speak. Um, thank you so much. Please, um, you know, have, have some grace and understanding as we move forward. And um, I think if there's nothing else from my board members, or uh, I guess Patty, if there's anything else you wanted to add before we close out? Okay, um, school board, last call?
I'll move to adjourn. Patty won't say anything. She's working on it.
Thank you, Amy.
Second.
Thanks, Jean. So on a roll call vote to adjourn, um, Anne?
No, this is just Pembroke School.
Uh, April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And myself as a yes at nine twenty-two PM. Thanks again, everybody.
Night, everybody.